Good morning, it's nine o'clock, July the twelfth, twenty twenty-one, and our regular Commissioners' Court meeting is now in session. First item on the agenda is roll call by our county clerk, Mary Jean Bagal Benoni. Mary Jean?
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Judge Rasmol.
Present.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Present.
Commissioner Lisondo. Commissioner Solis.
Present.
And Commissioner Garson.
Present.
We have a court.
Mr. Mary Jean, next item is our invocation by Dr. Roger Heather, Commissioners' Court Chaplain.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Dr. Heather.
Good morning. Let's begin today with our heads and allowing God to speak with us this morning. Our Father, Source of all, we gather this morning with the understanding that we're here to conduct the business of governing. But Father, we ask that you help us to step back and obtain a new perspective on what we're involved in. Father, you've given us the privilege of self-government, and at the same time, you're willing to be an active part of our process with your guidance and wisdom. So help us to grasp the new perspective that you are involved in the affairs of men, as Benjamin Franklin reminded us in the Constitution as it was being framed. So today, Father, we invite you into this place to give guidance and great wisdom to our leaders, strengthen their confidence in that they will proceed and accept your help. Prepare their minds and their spirits so that they may recognize your voice. And may you grant our leaders health and strength in body and in mind and in spirit for what lies ahead in Christ's holy prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Fourth Communications Commissioners, any communications? Well, we had a nice week last week of some rain, plenty of wind up our, well, all the neighborhoods, Commissioner, I think you guys are gonna have a lot of work mowing with your mowers. We all got your, your mowers in place and then.
Mowing, mowing and pot holes.
Yes, mowing and pot holes, but that's, that's part of the problem, but I think overall it's all good. I think Falcon Lake went up two, two feet, I believe, so again, a little bit more water in the lake.
Finally, see a little bit of water driving past the bridge.
Yes, I mean, we need so much more, but it's, it's looking a lot better.
Do we have a lot of grass fires during the, during July?
So before the rain on Fourth of July, we did, we, we got around ten grass fires, four were legit, the other, the rest were extinguished before we really got there. But yeah, we had a few, the rains really helped us. I, I really wish the rain would have been here a day before.
The week before.
Well, the firework display was really nice too as well, it was, almost went off for like twenty minutes.
It was impressive, yeah, I saw, I saw most of it, I saw most of it from my, from my house, my backyard, we can see where, I did a good job. So yes, it's, it's good. I think a lot of people have placed it, a lot of people look forward to, to that event, so I'm glad we were able to put it on this year. I think Danny mentioned called me or texted me that he, our fire chief had a bee sting that acted upon him.
Yes, sadly he did, he experienced a bee sting on his pinky toe, which actually is a cold body.
Wow.
So the friend who's having trouble with his foot, he's unable to walk, so he was going to see a doctor this morning.
Well, thank you for being here, Liz, and I, I share the, share your report.
Of course, yeah, so sadly, as far as we know, the state has terminated the testing for other counties. But I made some phone calls, I'll, if you look right up, there are some facilities that are still testing, but most of them have a registration fee. The only one that I know that is free, if I'm not mistaken, is the community pediatric clinic next to D and E. And, but that's someone that takes days for you to get the results. And another one is C V S, but that's the appointment, you have to do it through the web, and that one's also free, if I'm not mistaken. But as far as the state, they're not gonna be using.
Yeah, they're just, the numbers weren't there, or is that statewide or just in our area?
I think, I'm, I'm not sure about that.
I believe it's almost statewide, I've seen other county officials post on Facebook that they've suspended testing their communities as well. So it might just be a funding issue as well.
Yeah, but thankfully we still have options, and some of them are free, except for it is a different initiative. Yeah, Daniel's Pharmacy also, but it's only maybe on certain days, and I think they have a registration fee as well.
So are any of them just walk-in, Gabby?
I think so, that they just walk in. The only one that has the appointment is going to be C V S. And as far as vaccinations go, we've been doing really good, we'll be getting a lot of first dosers. I get excited with the first doses because I'm, you know, deciding to finally get vaccinated, which is a good thing. The next two weeks, we're not gonna be vaccinated because our allotment, we had the last allotment was a hundred, we needed. So we're waiting on another four hundred to get here. We still haven't gotten an answer if we're gonna get it or not, but I think the chief was gonna do a transfer form a rate, or he was gonna request one, and so we can get a hundred, so we can continue with the vaccinations in the town.
So that's good that y'all are continuing to get people walking.
As of April, our, our facility alone has vaccinated eight hundred and fifty.
Very good.
I mean, it's not the number we still get, we're vaccinated.
No, but, but it's a steady stream of, I'm glad.
Have y'all received any information on follow-up booster shot coming up, and all of those new strains that are coming up, and talking about it?
Yeah, I've been hearing like different new casts, and they say yes, and they say no, we're not sure.
So have you received anything official?
No, not official, the only thing official that we do have is advisors still vaccinated sixty-nine bucks, or, 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 and the adjournments still doing eight, and we still haven't decided if we wanna do that or not.
I think, I think we had a few new cases, public cases.
I think so, yeah.
I, I think we had, since July the fifth, three new cases have been reported. And I, I think our numbers show that we're up to fully vaccinated twelve years of age and over fifty-eight point one four, we're not quite at the sixty percent. The sixty-five years and, and over with one dose, close to a little over eighty-three percent, and then fully vaccinated for sixty-five and over is almost seventy-five percent. So I think we're struggling to reach that sixty percent first.
So we'll get there.
Hopefully we can get there. But yeah, I, I did see that we had three new cases in our community. So we still need to keep, be aware of.
Of course, yeah, our, our, I know that the fire department, you just continue to take, you know, the appropriate actions, and we're here and everything.
On all the calls you make, yeah.
Yeah, even though we're vaccinated.
I'm assuming the school district will probably start having vaccinated rise before school starts for their faculty and students, yes, or any?
Hopefully they do, and we're willing to help out with whatever.
And we don't know anyone else that's been vaccinated, so probably.
Um, I think the pediatric clinic, the one next to D and E is also vaccinated, that's all.
And I believe D S H S has one, one day a week that they're vaccinated, so folks can call, you know, D S H S, Zapata, and see. I believe that's the case, they do make appointments, and it's one day a week, my understanding of it.
Yeah, as soon as we start vaccinating again, I'll go ahead and put it on Facebook pages, usually we use social media to, you know, put the site for our vaccinations.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning Sheriff.
Morning.
Sheriff, if you wanna share some news, I know you've been busy attending important meetings regarding border security, that you might wanna share with the Commissioners?
Yes. Yes, I had a roundtable discussion with the Governor this week, this weekend, and it was a reproductive meeting. It, it's looking good for all the counties that are participating in.
Disaster difference, yeah.
Because the numbers are there, and the resources, we do need them in, in every county. Every county's different, but we are asking for, for monies and resources and manpower for each, each county that's, that was there. Now, they did, they did advise us that some of the illegals are carrying the new strain.
Yes, the Delta variants, I believe that, that's been in the news.
So our jail, we're gonna keep it the same, no visitation, and we're trying to, to vaccinate everybody that's coming in, all the inmates. And our, our employees are gonna be wearing the masks mandatory in the facilities for the well-being of the inmates and the employees. Another thing is, we are gonna have to meet this following week again with the Governor to push the budget through the appropriations committee. And we had a meeting with them too, and, and everybody's looking forward to, to moving forward and.
I think your department, other departments that are involved, will be involved in the process. I think we submitted all the budget requests to the Governor, I think, is that already in place?
Yes, your office, the county attorneys, and the district attorneys also, I believe.
And county clerk, I believe.
And the county clerks, and everybody else that's involved in the, in the operations of, you know, the county, everybody, everybody's gonna benefit from it.
Sheriff, did you all discuss, or was anything mentioned about a timeline as far as when that funding would be approved, or when we would receive notice of that, how much would be approved, or something like that?
As soon as this meeting comes about, Commissioner, I will, I will be, be able to tell you, because that's when the appropriations would come in. And there is money already allotted there, that's what we're told, and we're just, it's a matter of people just voting, for it to move forward.
In our jail, county jail, Sheriff, what, what kind of numbers are you expecting once?
Well, I, I did, I did ask for an additional addition to our jail, ninety-six bed addition with the Governor, and I'll be meeting with the Texas Jail Commission. And see, that, that's not gonna come out of the county, it'll come out of the, of that budget.
Right.
As well as us housing all those inmates, we, I'm gonna try to set a revenue up, a line item, so we can receive money for all of those, those, those individuals.
So Sheriff, what would be the process, I know you mentioned that some of these illegals coming into the community are possibly carrying the virus. So when they're apprehended here in our county, what would be the process, precautionary measures taken to avoid it spreading in our jail?
What they suggested is for us to have a soft cell release, which is a separate, like, like one of those tents. But it, it'll be manned with certified jailers and peace officers, and E M Ts, and anybody that wants to be involved in the operation. They will not have contact with our normal inmates, locals, or our marshals, or any other inmates. And those people in there will be constantly twenty-four seven checked and vaccinated as well. So it's totally separate from the operation.
So, so the, the new process will be that the county or the state will be charging these illegals with state crimes as soon as they cross illegally into the state?
The criminal trespass.
Criminal trespass charges, so they will not be turned over immediately to the board patrol then, or?
No, no, if the, if we can do the processing and hold them there and magistrate them there, then send them back, we'll be able to do that in the soft release.
So, so your numbers at the jail will certainly be going up, considering the number of cases going through, through county court and with their, you know, criminal trespassing, etc., misdemeanor.
I don't know if y'all saw about the eighteen T chrome truck?
Yes.
Yeah. There was twenty-six individuals in there, four minors in that space in the back of that truck, so it's a good thing that, you know, they were stopped and taken into custody as soon as possible.
I think part of the, as far as equipment, Sheriff, that your requests have, are, look favorably to be received, or is it bad equipment?
I did, I did, I did tell the Governor that we went high because we do need a lot of resources, from communication towers all the way to vehicles, all the way to employees, and he said it looked favorable for everybody.
And the submitted budget, Sheriff, for the county, the total was what?
For our office, it was twenty-five million.
I think that includes.
He came out and used the Macallan.
The jail facility.
And that's, that's also, Commissioner, having an area at our, at our boat ramp for processing as well. We catch illegal fishermen or illegals crossing in boats, they'll be processed there, right then and there, we'll be able to, to work along with the gang lords and board patrol there, right on the boat ramp, instead of bringing that into town.
Has the board patrol mentioned anything as far as them adding agents here to our county, or have you heard anything on that?
That's another meeting that we're gonna have this week, and I believe so, Chief Hudek and, and Chief Sherman addressed that they're gonna try to get more, more boots on the ground here as well, along with the National Guard.
Very well, well, good job, Sheriff, bye.
Appreciate you.
I saw, thank you for sharing your picture with the Governor.
Yeah, it was, it was exciting that we were able to speak one-on-one, and, and he's hoping if you come down to Zapata, he's gonna schedule a meeting, so.
Very well, good, good deal.
One thing, I was reached out by C V P and the National Guard, and I need to speak to Gabby and Chief Ariaga. I think they're, they might have extra vaccines, but we need to work the process out to bring them to Zapata as soon as possible. So I'll be meeting with them today as well. I'm gonna pass out the, that we all have.
We appreciate you working hard, Sheriff, we're working hard, Commissioner.
And it's for everybody's, not just for my office, for the county as a whole.
All our funds will be definitely particularly used, Judge, any funds we receive in the state.
I think so, small rural counties like us, we don't have additional resources to really put in place everything we need, so if we can get these wish lists that, that we've all put together, I think we'll be doing very good.
One thing, I don't know, you remember the gentleman at the stakeholders meeting that wanted to try out the fence for his property?
Yeah.
I think he's gonna be called, I think they wanna do a trial run on, on these areas for the fence, so we'll see.
Sheriff, were the new controls already?
The, the B O has been already worked out, and it works today.
Any other Communications Commissioners? Thank you, Sheriff, for coming up and sharing your input. And we'll move on to public comment, the section provides the public the opportunity to address the Commissioners' Court on any items on the agenda, the members of the public at this time. And now we move on to item number six, approval of invoices. We have invoices from June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, and July the eighth, twenty twenty-nine, for a total of seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-six cents. Motion by Commissioner Garza, seconded by Commissioner Solis, any discussion on those in pair with the item?
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on to. Item number seven, is a pool of treasury reports, Mr. Salinas, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. You want in and pass out the treasury report late Friday, so it should be in front of you. If you turn page one, shows investments that Zapata National Bank told me eight million, seven hundred and seventy-seven, five hundred and sixty point seventy-four. And year-to-date interest earned has been forty-three thousand, three forty-seven point eighty-one. And following that, Judge and Commissioners, just to break down the bills and investments, I usually carry them for ninety days. And that has to be the funds, we can just go ahead and transfer those funds out of there.
So, so the court is able to transfer these funds, or is there penalties for already withdrawn within?
No, we don't have penalties if, if, you know, already withdrawn, like any other.
Might be the one with the item that's coming up.
Yeah, Z N D doesn't charge us any fees. So when I worked out the contract from, what, back nineteen years ago?
That's good.
We were able to work that out, that we don't pay the interest and penalties for already withdrawn of investments.
Okay.
The following page, I don't know if one of those are checking accounts, and we had beginning balances of three million, four hundred and fifty-seven, one million, forty-five, twenty-seven. Then we ran deposits of four million, eight hundred and fifty-seven, four forty-five, twenty-two. Spent out of all those checking accounts, two million, nine hundred and thirty-five, nine oh five, ninety-nine, and ending balance for all those checking accounts was a total of five million, three eighty-eight, six sixty-five, point forty. Our new, it's about the county operating account, which is what we're consolidating all the, the accounts slowly, we've been closing a lot of the checking accounts, developing direct into this single account. We have the beginning balance of three hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and sixty-one, forty-seven-two. And we brought a deposit of three million, two seventy-five, seven forty-six, point forty-four, and spent out of there one million, eight hundred and forty-nine, three ninety-eight, point fifty-eight. And the ending balance at the end of the month was one million, eight hundred and sixteen, seven eighty-nine. And then we have the general fund, which is still, we're keeping it open because we're trying to get all those direct deposits coming into that bold account. And the interest and sinking, they zeroed out the lateral, the special in bridge, and the special in bridge balance, that's a, an ending balance of eighty thousand. The Water Works out of the ending balance of three hundred and point nine thousand, five hundred and five, point forty-five. They ran deposits of one hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and twelve point sixty-four. And then we spent out of there eight million, I mean, eight thousand, sixty-eight, point fifty. And in the month, we have a fund of one, forty-nine, four fifty-nine, which will be taking that money and posting it out.
So, but that account will stay in place, right? It's, it's a, it's a enterprise account?
I've been talking to the, our consultant, Mr. Floyd, so we're working a decision to just keep it separate from our operating accounts, so I'll let you know later.
Well, will you often be able to determine, like, some of these accounts that, you know, let's, let's say the.
Yes.
Christmas club, or any of those, or enterprise fund, that, that have their own checking accounts, you'd be able to?
We're gonna have, I wanna provide you with a general ledger number.
So those money will still be, they're not gonna be used for?
They're all these directives to the operating account.
Right, okay.
So, but I'm gonna provide you with balances, with an internal breakdown, yes, with an internal breakdown.
Mr. Salinas, what about the rec, my records management account?
That one, I've been in communication with Mr. Floyd, so we operate in this one.
We'll be able to find out exactly how much money we have every month?
Oh, yes, definitely, yes.
Like a line item, is that what?
They're just being line items.
Okay, that's fine, as long as we know exactly how much goes in.
We just had so many accounts at the bank, that, that the reconcilment process was taking too long, and that's delaying our audit on the time.
Yeah, but it's just that the state has some, you know, requirements, you know, for those accounts, so we just need to make sure we know exactly how much is.
That's internally our software will have a breakdown, but it will just be a positive one.
Okay.
Yes, so I'll, that's, I'll be putting that in the actual treasury report for you, and that way you can look at all the balances from all these other council reports.
Okay.
We'll have to have general ledger now. The next page, our other accounts that are held by other unofficial. Bills have an ending balance of one million, nine hundred and eighty-three, three forty-two, point thirty. We ran the classes of eight hundred and one, three seventy-six, one thirty-six. Spent out of there one million, two hundred and six, four sixty-eight, one oh four. And the ending balance was one million, five seventy-eight, two fifty, point sixty-two. And as you can see there, those are, you know, county attorneys and the juvenile probation sheriff accounts, so those are held by other unofficial, so those are the accounts that are held by somebody else.
But, but, will those still be in existence, or are you gonna combine those two?
I don't think they're combining those, those, and I don't sign on them, that's why they have to stay separate.
Okay.
Page number seven are the toll checks issued. So we issued one million, three hundred and twenty-one, five hundred and fifty, point thirty-five, and on bottom, that'd be running amount of the year-to-date. We issued eight million, eight hundred and forty, two eighteen point oh four. And the following is what we issued from all the months, and those totaled two million, eighteen thousand, sixty-eight, point twenty-nine. One of those, it's a big payment from the Water Works, and as you can see, four hundred and twenty-nine. The other page, number nine, shows the electricity for the month was six, six thousand, seventy-four, seventy-two. And the water bill came in at thirteen thousand, six ninety-three, point twenty-four. That page number ten is the, the direct deposit from Hill Corp, and as I mentioned last month, we had a deposit of eighteen thousand, nine seventy-three. Well, now it dropped for June to five thousand, four sixty-six, point seventy-eight, and the judge explained why we had, had given off last month.
And the price of natural gas is climbing up, I think it's over three fifty, so the checks should be a little better for everyone, but it's a good sign. I've actually received some calls about possible drilling back in our county, so that's all good news, hopefully it'll materialize.
That's right, we welcome it.
Yes, I told them, those are very good news, so proud of the news, so hopefully we can.
That's great news, Sheriff, hopefully we'll get some of that going back in, in our, we, you know, for year-to-date, we've received sixty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-one, eighty-three, eighty-five from Hill Corp. And we have budgeted forty-nine thousand, so we're at a hundred and twenty-seven percent of revenues collected for the, of, for the year. Page number eleven are the rentals, that show very much for June, we did see a deposit of five hundred and fifty for rental fees for our pavilion, our community center, deposited a thousand, three hundred. And that, those are the only deposits that came in for the month. Page number twelve shows the collection by our county clerk in June ten, there was four thousand, four seventy, twenty-five. And then to fund fifteen, a hundred, our district clerk in June ten, six thousand, seven hundred and thirty. Our district clerk in June fifteen, one thousand, six eighteen. And our ordinance, deposits came in at eight hundred and forty-two thousand. And our sales tax, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven thirty-three, four ninety-eight. So our county clerk is at ninety-six percent collection rate, from what we budgeted for the year, and is fund fifteen, seventy-nine percent. Our district clerk is fund ten, ninety-three percent, and it's fund fifteen, a hundred and five percent. Our arms is at a hundred and thirty-six percent, we have budgeted eight hundred thousand, and we have another amount, Judge, that is not reflected here, is that those payments for those came in after the end of the month.
So it'll be above the one point, sorry, five?
It'll be more than one million, ninety-five. So next month, you'll, you'll see another amount there. We collected those.
Basically, we, we, you know, they are expecting revenues on, on the previous year, but it's, that's how we formulate.
And then we have, you know, a few that opened up early in the year, like, you know, October, you see up here the two and thirty, so that we didn't take into consideration when we did the budget. So that right there is an additional two and thirty.
Well, it's, it's a good thing that we're gonna surpass that projection, Judge, along with the sales tax, we're gonna surpass the sales tax projection as well.
And our sales tax is at ninety point seventy-six percent, we budgeted two million, so we collected a million, eight hundred and fifteen, so those numbers will be there. Page number thirteen shows our landfill deposit for June was twenty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-five. And the jail, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty. Our show telephone, five thousand, ninety-seven, seventy-three. Our jail bond fees, so that's over four hundred and one. Jail office fees, three hundred and forty. Our EMS department deposit is fifty-nine thousand, seven forty-three, twenty-one. So the landfill is at a hundred and ten percent, one seventy-one. Our jail is at fifty-six point twenty-six percent, the jail telephone, fifty-six point forty-seven. Our jail office fees, ninety-four percent. And our EMS department is at sixty point forty-four percent, so.
The jail, the Sheriff passed out his, his figures for the coming month.
Yes.
And, and he's showing that we'll be depositing a hundred and ninety-three thousand for the coming month, so revenues keep increasing in the, in the jail, Sheriff, so.
And hopefully we'll get some more this week, too.
Yes, so that'll, I think, get us close to, very close with three months to go to our budget amount.
Yes, I was looking at the, the Sheriff's report, and the total for the month, for the June, is a hundred and ninety-three thousand, seventy-one, point twenty-five. So as soon as we get that direct deposit, it'll be reflected on our report.
For the coming month, yeah.
For the coming month, so this is what it's billing, so as soon as we collect it.
We, we appreciate the percentage total, Mr. Sheriff, that really helps to get a visual.
Yes, Commissioner, it was very hard for us to, for me to just give you amounts, so, you know, I worked up the spreadsheet where we had the budget amount on the top, and see how our percentages were working till the end of the year. So hopefully that, that helps you all look at, get a better picture of our finances. The next page, fourteen, are the deposits that came in for date number one, eleven thousand, five seventy, point fifteen. J P number two doesn't show anything, it's got zeros, but I've, I've got the amount, if y'all would like to write it in, the deposit was made up to the end of the month, so they deposited seventeen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one, point fifty-three. J P number three deposited four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six, point ninety-one. And J P number four shows zeros, the deposit hasn't been proximal off the scale.
Mr. Salinas, did we already take care of that bill that we had with the N data for the fees?
Oh, yes, I took care of that.
Oh, that's been paid.
So they, they charge on a, a monthly collection percentage?
Yes, yes, and, but they have a once, a, once a year, or an annual fee of twenty-four thousand.
For the program?
Yes.
So we're, we're.
We're caught, yeah, I talked to them, and there was some, yeah, it's taken care of.
Okay.
So, on precinct number four, she hasn't deposited yet, July twelfth?
As of Friday, when we're putting the reports together, we hadn't received the money yet.
Okay.
Yeah, as soon as I get those collection reports, I forward to the Attorney Commissioner, I'm sure he looks at them and reviews them, so he can get those, those little things that we have, so I think we're all cut up, because I'm gonna.
And go and follow up.
And, yeah.
What I did, what I did last time I called them, just to make sure, there was something that we already paid, they hadn't gotten a check, so we canceled the checks and reissued checks, and, but we got.
As they're coming in as.
We have a baseline now, we didn't have that last year.
Or can we take it out of, as the money has been collected, I don't know how would be the easiest way.
It all depends on the amount that's collected.
Exactly, so much.
It's hard to project.
What we can budget is the annual rental for the program.
Right.
That we should have, so that shouldn't be a problem.
And then make payments as, as the collections come in.
Exactly.
But we can estimate off of this year, though, from the budget, on revenue and.
And then do a break out for the remaining money, so.
So we should be deliberate on the actual contract amount that we signed for the program that, that's been used.
Yeah, I think there was just some confusion as to where, how are we gonna repay the commission? Whether it's a yearly amount, or it appears to be monthly now, so.
Yeah, it's always been monthly, and then the ones that take her, that are the actual JP. So they've actually had a report that they print at the end, because I mean, they've gotten with me several occasions. And I said, well, I don't have the same program. So the JP runs, they're reported at the end of the month. They process appeal, bring it to the auditorium, and we pay the percentage as per the contract of their collections.
Very much.
So whatever they collect, that the program actually gets it to them.
Okay.
I know, we were getting the, the annual fee of twenty-four thousand, we had it again from three different JP, so, Mr. Salinas, you know, we're looking to contracts, looking for, it was only one time, not three times. So all that, we wanted to figure all that out before we sent any checks.
And I know there's been some discussion over the, I guess, the terms of the contract with this company. So is it basically, do they add their cut to the finer fee, or does it come out of the finer fee?
No, if, if the fee's a hundred dollars, they'll add thirty dollars to it, so it comes out of the, of the payer.
So they add it in addition to?
Yes.
Okay.
We get, we get our hundred dollars and then the thirty dollars.
But we're getting the whole hundred and thirty, so we gotta.
Yes, exactly, yes.
There was some discussion, you know, there wasn't.
Now, we looked into it, yeah, we read over the contract.
So the county gets its full share?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, that's why I have a concern, because back in the day, it was twenty percent, and then when I looked at the contract, it's like twenty plus percent.
Well, the math shows twenty-some, but after looking into it and talking to them, it's the thirty percent, which is legal, they can do up to thirty percent on their.
Well, as long as it was work, I mean, which they're doing.
Yeah, they did provide me with a copy of the local government code and stuff, so I said, that's fine, I mean, I just wanna make sure that we're not overpaying what we're supposed to do.
But we do get our hundred percent, we do get ours.
And then that, part of that money goes to the state, and we just keep a portion.
Sure, right.
But anyway, that's in our report at the end, it's just the overtime report for your review. What we pay at Water Works, and so if you have any questions, please.
Motion to approve the report. Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Garza, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number eight is a pool of checks issued. We have checks in your package from six, five, twenty twenty-one, through seven, eight, twenty twenty-one.
Motion to approve the amount of seven ninety-seven, eight seventy-four, one thirty-six.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Solis, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number nine is a tax assessment collector department report. Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have.
I, yes, I, I went and handed out a new report, there I basically showed them a lot of information to go on for the delinquent, the, the delinquent status, what's still pending for each entity. And we got, this guy, each one of them, and gives you the percentage of what's still pending, or what has been collected. So today's adware was born for the month of June. We had a general fund, we had a hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven point sixty-two. Interest and sinking is at, we collected sixty-six thousand, seven eighty-seven six, on to market, fourteen point seventy. Special voting bridge, eighteen thousand, eighty-one, forty-one, for a total of two hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two, eighty-seven. And that's for all of the tax collections.
Yes.
Other fees and collections, we had hotel motel, seven thousand, two thirty-seven point oh three. Interest earnings, twenty-six point oh two, and for the tax sale. Of course, on the tax sale, we have to do the new, on a new resolution that you all passed last year. Where we have to get the people that want to bid, they have to bring in an application, we have to approve it, make sure that they don't owe any taxes.
Right.
So on that, we only have ten dollars in the fourth, that's gonna be that we're gonna be charging.
And the option is available for women, Commissioner?
It already happened last year.
They are covered?
Yes.
Was there a good participation, or?
We had about nine applicants, but we only had like four properties that were actually sold.
Okay, so all the properties that were developed for auction sold?
There was, I think two of them were struck off, and just four of them went after that, so those were sold. I don't have that amount, they didn't give it to me, so I haven't had that. So total collection for the month was two hundred and seventy thousand, sixty-three dollars and ninety-two. Eleven thousand, six sixty-five was sent to the delinquent attorneys. And of course, our collection report to the trailer was two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight, ninety-two.
That's still, I mean, for still in the year, you're still bringing in tax revenue?
Yes, yes, we are.
Y'all are, you're almost at eighty-nine percent, so.
We're almost at eighty-nine percent, last year was eighty-five point oh seven percent.
I think you're off in the double L with the.
We do have our, I don't know if you need me to go over this, I did include refunds that, on your end of the report, but I heard you all made a show the amount that has been refunded to.
What page is that on?
It's in the left, we have one. And as far as our hotel lot, too, we're at the collection year to date, ninety-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-three thirty-five. So that's, that's my report.
Thank you.
You, you're welcome, I appreciate it.
We move on to the action items, Commissioners, we will deliberate, consider action. Item number ten is to approve the proposal of labor only for the installation of flooring at Zapata Community Center. Commissioners, I had approved the proposals, I guess, last meeting, on the need to replace the flooring. The proposal that came in, only one came in, had only, the installation would be over the existing floor tiles. And after comparing with professionals, it's probably not a good idea to do that, and I think it's better we remove it, strip it, and then, so I think we should.
Table it?
Well, table it and go out for proposals for the removal and installation of the.
I'm not gonna take it from the table.
Motion by Commissioner Garza to table, seconded by Commissioner Mendoza, any discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion tabled, and we'll place it in the, our county paper to see, we're running for two weeks, to see what kind of proposal we can get. There is a need to replace that flooring, but I think we better do it right. Just, you know, I think through floor, ask some of the professional.
What happens is, if you lay it on top, if you glue it to the top one, the top one is only as good as how well the bottom one was glued to.
So we might have the same problem after spending all that money.
It's essentially be installing over a week, not a year.
Correct.
Exactly, yeah, so, y'all, let's do it right.
He said if it was tile, it'd be a different thing.
Right.
But since it was adhesive, it was.
Yeah, it's vinyl flooring, so, yeah, I think they do that with ceramic tile, I think.
Yes, they can do that on top of it, yeah.
And it's not gonna be an easy task to pull that off.
It'll probably be more expensive to remove it than to install it, so, but that's what we're looking at. Item number eleven is a report on the nutrition center home delivery program, and also to approve a in-person dining at the nutrition center. Thank you, our new nutrition center director is here.
Your first official meeting, man.
Yeah, I'm so nervous. Good morning, yes, I was speaking to the people over at STDC, and they're strongly encouraging, encouraging some of the county to consider opening the nutrition center. We have depleted our budget for the home delivered program.
Yes.
Right now, we're at a negative of forty-one thousand dollars. I did get a call on Friday that we're gonna be receiving a fifteen thousand dollar check for the CARES program, which will bring this to like twenty-six thousand.
Yeah, Commissioner, when, 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 of course, with the pandemic, we pulled our centers, and we continued with the home delivered meals. That was expanded dramatically, which was needed, I think we had, what, over two hundred participants receiving home deli? Well, some of that was reimbursable, some of it is not. So we ran up a total of about twenty-five thousand dollars that, basically, we, which is, I think, good monies that we've spent on our community. But there is a need to go back to in-person dining, so the reimbursements will not be coming to the home deli. The home delivered program will be for only those participants that have those needs, yes.
Yes, it's only for people who are not able to come in person, that are either bedridden, or they have other physical disabilities, or that provide care for people with disabilities.
Is there, Miss, have you authorized how to, any of your participants in the program to see what the participation would be on the in-person?
We have, we have those that say that they're not coming, however, I was gonna run a survey this week to see how many of them are willing to come back. When I went ahead and introduced myself, because I went house to house, and I told them that Ms. Rosie was retiring, retiring, and I was coming in, most of them were asking, like, when are you opening? You all are only linked to the community, like, we.
Do you wanna, you wanna pitch a loop already?
Same, you know, many asked it, but it wasn't ours. Yes, they were interested, most of them were interested in, in coming back. And I, I think we are gonna lose some of them, because, like I tell you, the home delivery is only for people who are disabled. And we wouldn't be able to provide service to everybody through it. But by reopening the center, we will be able to provide the congregate and transportation services. And this would give us access to money, money's budgeted to these specific services. I was made aware that in the out-of-town program, or the INA program, we have like twenty thousand dollars that we can, we can get.
Reversed.
Yes, there. From the DNR program, which is the, the local transportation, there's about seven thousand dollars. From the congregate, there's thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars that we can start charging our meals from. On average, the nutrition was providing five hundred and ten one-way trips out of town, which is like when they were going to San Juan, or they would take them to the doctors, to Laredo and other places. These are charged every time the person steps into the van, so five-ten one-way, I know, I, you need to take them elsewhere, so it doubles, or multiplies, must be. To, they were also roughly serving about a thousand, six hundred units per month, these are the meals they were serving. At the moment, in the nutrition center here in Zapata, we're capable of servicing about fifty participants by keeping the, the social distancing guidelines. In San Inasian, we have fewer participants, and social distance is not a problem. However, participants in Picon will have to be transported to Zapata, because we do have a issue with the building.
Yes, well, and I think I'm an item to hopefully reverse that, but, so, yes. We had a conversation, she made, she made me aware that there are some deficiencies at the Picon Nutrition Center, so we'll be addressing those. But for the meantime, yes, they'll have to be coming to Zapata and.
Yes.
Hopefully.
And it's good, because that will give us. More participation. We get more participation and more.
For reimbursement.
Yes, more reimbursement.
It's a little outing for them also, a little travel outing, but we're here to the big city.
I, I asked, I asked, Miss Lopez, when would be the right time to present to the court to open the center? Is it this week, next week, two weeks? When, I think they, I think the, the, the council wanted, yesterday.
The fifteenth, and I'm like, no way, you need to get me more times. So I was thinking next Monday, and we prepare the, the centers, I mean, just like clean everything, we gather everything we need, maybe next Monday.
No, I mean, honestly, we wouldn't really know how many will come until we open, so we need to open and.
At a fifty-person max.
Yes.
Fifty percent?
Fifty person, fifty participants.
Fifty participants at a time.
Is a maximum that can.
Yeah, that's a good number.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's.
Can I make a motion to approve it?
Motion by Commissioner.
Yeah, we would be opening all three centers with the exception of Picon.
And you repair some of them.
Because of the roof, yes.
Motion by Commissioner Garza, seconded by Commissioner Solis, to reopen our centers for in-person dining next Monday, the, it would be nineteen?
Nineteen.
July the nineteenth, at, I guess, the maximum capacity for Zapata Center would be a fifty-person participant. Any other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you, Miss Lopez, for the report, good luck.
Can they still apply for the program, or are you getting out? Yes, we are.
I think the registration is over.
Yes, it is.
Item number twelve is to request engineering planning services for the design of section three of Zapata County Cemetery.
Motion to approve section.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Solis. Mr. Salinas, you know, operates the cemetery, his office for the county. He had some proposals, I think it's in your package, Commissioners, as to when, when the design, whether we keep the design as current, or do we incorporate some, I think, I think you'll see that in your packets, this is some of the things that Mr. Salinas would like to see in place.
I didn't bring the copies for the.
I have it, yes, yes. Yes, if you can, I mean, it's, it's an interesting proposal, that a little different than what we currently have. It's, I know it's been used in other cemeteries, might be appropriate for the new section.
Yes, I attended a funeral outside our Zapata, and, and that's sort of, you know, came up with the idea of maybe we could do that in a new section. In the old section where we're at right now, I was speaking to Mr. Mendoza, and they're gonna go and, and certainly that for us, so we can start setting, because we have like three sections still left on posted, highway to the street.
Posted, yes. That's Long Street, right, yeah, Old Street, yeah.
So we still have that section for sale, and the one I'm referring to is a new section.
Right, that we just purchased, and we're gonna develop, and we're gonna, yeah.
And I wanted to throw this idea out in the open for your recommendations, that when we developed that, Commissioners, was maybe not having streets like we have normally now. Where we would have a main road just going in for the first, and visitors would just come back around, and that would give us more space to sell more plots. Sort of like, picture yourself looking at one of those military cemeteries, you know, where we would just sell the plot, and they would put a tombstone. And people would walk up there and.
So basically, no alleys?
No alleys, no, no roads, so we could utilize that, I mean, we could get, together with the surveyor, and see how many more we can be able to sell, if we go with that rock. But right now, that's preliminary ideas that I, that I, I'm trying to bring back to the court for that new addition, will be, just improvements. The other was a canopy. It is so hard for us to attend and pay our less respects when it's raining, when it's a hundred and twenty degrees out there. And at this place where I went, they had a canopy, so it'd be, you know, a small place, I'm not asking for a huge pavilion like, like Commissioner Garza has that basketball pavilion. Well, not that huge, but something similar, picture something smaller, twenty by twenty, I don't know, somewhere where the casket could be laid on one end. And we have the, sort of like a base where they would put the casket on. Somewhere where the, the casket could be laid on one end, and we have the, sort of like a base where they would put the casket on. And then the funeral director would set up the chairs, so it'd be just open concrete.
You could, you're gonna have it in wheels, right?
What's that question?
The, 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 can't you, you're gonna have it in wheels, so you can-
No, we'd be one place.
One place.
We would, you know, in the design, we would have it, you know, at, right at the center or at the entrance.
It's kind of like the size of the pavilion, and I'm thinking, just from experience from the, at City of Laredo, that's the way they have it. They have a main gazebo type, like the one that we have at the pavilion.
They, they don't actually put the, they, they don't put the structure over the actual raised side.
It's on the side, it's kind of like in the center, and then from there they go.
Right, and from there, you know, the pallbearers would then have to services, you know, we would all go pay our last respects, and we would all be standing behind the family. So, the funeral director would still set up the chairs for the family to sit. And, but we'd be under a canopy, you know, you know, of, of disheding.
But, but, but the access to actually, the plots, get a tractor in there, how, how would that work?
Well, that's just like they do the military ones and the ones they do in Laredo, and we would have the small tractor to be able to go and-
So, that'd be the space between, that's what we, I'm, I'm putting it forward just to see for the engineer, to give direction to the engineer as to what do we want, what we currently have, or do we want to try something?
But the plot is, don't know about the funeral. Yes, right, yes.
I mean, I'm sure they do it, there's gotta be that small tractor.
Yes, I haven't gotten to all those little details, it was just like an idea, so before we open up that new section.
So, you won't be able to, as a family member, Commissioner, we won't be able to drive up to, to see whoever's buried there? You'd have to park, and then walk.
And in a way, it's a good thing, because they're always breaking all the lines, we always have a problem bringing-
The one that Laredo has, it's, it's like a little shed, and you know, but it's in wheel, you're not getting moved.
Yes, from the church time, that's very nice. I've been to many of those funerals.
Yes, and, and you know-
So, that, that's a concept, do we want to tell the engineer, this is what we want, or do we go with what we currently have, so?
Or would you use the sheds that are being put up all over?
Well, that's on the next page.
I mean, this is just an idea for the new section, right, so we can, you all can come up with ideas.
But we're not gonna take any action on it.
We're gonna, we hire an engineer, we have, so do we tell the engineer, they were not like this?
On the planning.
On the planning, or do we go with what we currently have? So, we do need direction.
Can you, you know, so, you hire, could he be able to help me, and, or you have somebody to design something?
The planning guy?
Well, the engineer would, would design it.
Yeah, we should go to the engineer, so we can provide him with something.
Well, we need to survey it, so it's part of the survey.
Yeah, he would, he would do the designing of it, we just need to give him direction, what we want.
Will both.
Mr. Salinas, what have you, have you, or, I've talked to the judge about this before, how about adding a columbarium? You know, where you put the, the cuppies holds for the, for the ashes. You save so much space, because they're tall, you know, you have so many, you know. I mean, I know it's costly, but it might-
You have all ideas that, that, you know, we've got time to develop, not much time, because our, our current cemetery is filling up rapidly.
There's another idea that I, that I also mentioned to the court, where we could do something like that, where a whole family, we could sell them, the little-
Yes, a colum-
I don't know what you call them.
It's a columbarium, it's, yeah.
Columbarium, but, where the whole family could be buried. But Laredo, I attended another funeral, and they had all urns in there.
Yes.
They just removed the, the front of it, and there was like maybe four, five family members in there, and they just, you know, so they put the additional urn in.
Well, and I think we're gonna free up a lot of plots in the old section, where we hold them accountable to pay what they owe, because there's a lot of plots that are reserved without payment. And that causes us to show like we're fooled, or we're not really fooled. If you have somebody that goes into your office and says, "I want fifteen plots," and I pay for one, and you're tying up fifteen for them. So, you know, that's, that's an ongoing issue.
That's an ongoing issue, where I think, I don't know, I, I brought a copy of the cemetery policies down to pass out that I developed back in April two thousand and nine, which was approved by the court back then. We tell them, but they don't adhere to them. But I think that's the next time that I'll pass up.
I just, I wanted to separate them, because I, I want to make sure the court gives direction to the engineer to tell him, okay, this is what we want to do.
Well, I don't think it would hurt, Judge, if we went with the idea, the new idea, maybe look at it, see what that would look like.
Okay.
And then if we see it on paper that it wouldn't work out, we'll smartify it.
You know, we, I mean, he's the expert.
To, to, try, yeah, allow the engineer to develop a plan with the new system.
I convinced the engineer, my, my idea, of course, an engineer, as an engineer, I'm not, and he would come up with the, the best way for us to drive in, you know, drive out of there and-
This was item twelve, right?
Yes.
We should already make the vote.
I don't know. Mendoza, Solis, sometimes.
We've already approved it.
Okay, so I have a motion second, and I'll quit, did we vote on it? No, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so now we move to the other item.
Next time.
Next item is, item number thirteen, is to amend rules, regulations, and pricing of plots at the Zapata County Cemetery. So, this is, I think, what Mr. Salinas was talking about, the, the rules that he, I guess, if the court approved back in two thousand-
I think two thousand and nine, I'd like for you to just review that. It, it doesn't talk about the pricing, but I can certainly touch on that. The pricing is more like, when we move into that new section. Thank you. And I have an extra new option. On the pricing, as I was mentioning, Judge, let's go to the rules. In two thousand and nine, I think that's the call was in two thousand and two, two thousand and three, or like nineteen years ago, we've always had problems in the cemetery. On the first one, you know, I did, wanted to run this through our county attorney back then, and he reviewed it. We made a couple of changes, but number one addresses that Zapata County would not be responsible for any damages to any of the monuments out there, you know, caused by natural disasters, you know, hurricane, rain, out of wind, hail, or a tombstone sinking, soil erosion, dirt filling, plumbing, et cetera. Because we would get all those complaints that they wanted the county to go fix and enroll in the cemetery. Number two was the owners of existing structures would bear all responsibilities to any damages done to an adjacent monument, other than an act of God to other monuments within the cemetery grounds. You know, so all disputes would be settled in a court of law. Now, the problem that we see today are all these structures that are being built.
And there's already, we had it in two thousand and nine, where you could do the structures. So, but we're not getting the enforcement of it.
The enforcement of it, and so, right now, we get complaints daily of somebody's structure, when it rains, or it never rained, but now that it's raining, all that water coming down on somebody else's monument, and I think, you know, causing it to stain.
I think we have you personally.
Yeah, man, and they're actually built on, on our pad. Not a lot, but, you know, they, they, so what do you do?
What we need to do, Mr. Gonzalez, is, is we already have it in place, the employee that has to make you aware and then make the treasurer, because if we don't find out, we can enforce it. So, I, I think it's gonna take some communication between your department and-
The minute, the minute we see them starting a structure, those structures, we need to stop it at that point.
Make them aware, tell, tell the employee there that works there and say, make them aware that they can't do it at.
You know, I, I don't know, we're working, you know, I wanna provide this to Mr. Solis and to look at, and come up with something that we can post a note.
Well, I mean, if we already approved, then, then basically what we're gonna take up today, and it's already in place.
Maybe this can also be provided to the funeral home, Mr. Salinas, and be, you know, given to the, the families when they're making services.
Yes, you know, the funeral service manager sat with me, and he was sad to hear the comments that he went and he approached the person that was building something using blocks, cedar block or whatever, and said, "You don't tell me what to do, the county doesn't tell me," in vulgar language. And he came straight to me and said, you know, "It's, it's sad that people talk to you that way." Where I was telling him that he needs to stay within the eleven by five, because that's all he purchased, just enough space for the coffin to be dropped down, and, you know, in the ground. And they're building, taking a foot, half a foot, and that's coming from the funeral director. So, they're taking, we're having to move down, and we're gonna end up with the last one not having a coffin.
That has to stop, so we, we need to enforce that.
You know, planting trees on the alleys, so, I mean, I even have it on there, the county has, you serve the rights to just knock them down. I mean, the alleys serve for us to be able to go through there, for us to go through there, the little tractor that digs out the, the, you know, the dirt.
It's definitely gone out of hand over the years.
It's really gone out of hand, so this is what I had since two thousand and nine. And then it talks about the ninety days that we've given, Commissioner.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why we just can't leave this alone, maybe, I think the only thing we can change is, what has changed since then is, is how much those plots are worth, and how much the actual plot.
Yeah, in the new section, they're definitely have to be a lot more expensive, and we need to let the public know, because we've gotta take into account all the money we've paid to purchase that, that land.
Right.
The improvements we wanna do with the entrance, Commissioner Solis, Commissioner Solis.
Yes, we need to get a break.
We wanna do a pretty entrance.
Well, we still have to fence the new section as well.
Fence the new section, we're talking about thousands of dollars of improvements, so we cannot continue selling them at one hundred and fifty. I have, and I'll provide at a later date, Judge, the pricing from the cemetery plots in Laredo. They're not cheap, you know. And with everything that we went up and struck, we've gotta get our money back. You know, we've built that little gazebo to make it comfortable for everybody to be under the shade, whether it's raining, whether it's-
And, and I think, for the most part, the public will not have a problem with paying more if they see these improvements being done to the cemetery. I think that we'll pay for it.
So, we're gonna come down with a, a list of all expenditures, and then the number of plots that we can sell to recoup just the money, not to make a profit, Judge. I mean, that's our idea. We can also-
So, you're not recommending the price on the plot, any adjustments?
Well, in the new section, definitely.
But not, not in the other one?
Not in this one right now, where we are selling them at one fifty, but it's a notice right now.
From now on, that's what you're trying to say.
When we go into the new section, Commissioner, the one where we're gonna-
Well-
Develop?
Develop. Well, and, and I think, Mr. Salinas, in order for us to be able to at least recoup some of those expenses, we really need to enforce the ninety-day rule that's on there, that if you don't pay your plots within ninety days, you're gonna be put back out into the-
Or you're gonna be paying a thousand dollars for it.
You know, I even have it here, where I don't wanna think, well, you're keeping my money, it's in this that I'm here that you're paying me in return. I mean, I'm not being a bad person, but these rules were set back in two thousand and nine. Whatever you pay, you're gonna get back. You didn't pay within ninety days, you know, it's not like, I'm, I'm gonna keep the hundred, but you can still fifty dollars. I'm gonna settle it and see.
So, will your office be doing the research on, on those reserved plots that haven't been paid and sending a notice?
Yes, I'm, I'm trying to see if we can do a mass mail-out to everybody that have balances.
You can probably put in the paper as well.
Yeah, maybe put in the paper, I'm weighing it out, or it'd be cheaper maybe putting a notice in the paper and just go with that, instead of a mass mail-out.
So, people's, maybe social media, which we can help by sharing that as well, because a lot of times, people change addresses and the mailings will just circulate and they'll never get to the infected person.
Maybe the court approves, and we can do just a small news paper notice, in English and Spanish, you know, a minute paid. You know, if you know you have ninety days to pay, right now, it's only one fifty. So, once we go to the new section, it's gonna be way over a thousand dollars.
And I think for our protection, Mr. Salinas, a copy when somebody walks into your office and, and to purchase a plot, there should be somewhere where they sign, where they acknowledge these rules and conditions, and you have that on file.
Yeah, because it'll just be the fair.
Yes.
Okay, there's some rules, please don't, and, and, you know, we can ask to be, I mean, I feel that we-
That's a lot of work.
She does more cemetery than treasures.
No, but, and, but, but there does need to be something on file where they acknowledge and sign, because if they wanna come back and, you know, litigation or anything, they need to have something on file or writing this in Spanish.
And if there's anything else that you all would like to add, I mean, I'm welcome to tell me, and then we put it back in the next Commissioner's court meeting and add it on here. These are the states that I had back in two thousand and nine.
We're already in place.
Yeah, but I think we shouldn't modify the price, even for the existing plots.
For discussion, I guess.
Yeah, I don't think.
Right, price, do you think, right now, how many plots are available still?
Well, we have-
That have not been reserved.
I don't really know about, there are about a hundred.
There's not very many left.
Not very many left.
I would, I would say five hundred dollars, Judge, would be fair. If we were considering going up to a thousand in the new addition.
I like what Mr. Commissioner Gasa was saying, that if they don't pay within ninety days, the one-
Right, I mean, those are your grandfather, yes.
No, but the ones that don't pay after ninety days, it goes up to the new price.
Right.
So, that'll go and repay that.
Okay, all right. So, is that a big part of the motion, Commissioner?
Yes, I'll make that part of the motion, because we, well, but this is for the existing.
We're, we're gonna just enforce the existing rules.
Yes, because we're not, we're not selling plots right now in the new addition.
No.
So, what's the motion?
So, I mean, the motion, Judge, that we modify the price to five hundred dollars for a plot, effective immediately.
Okay. And then we'll enforce the existing-
Ninety-day restriction, and anybody who-
Bar structure, those structures should be built, so with this boundary.
And enforce the restrictions.
So, maybe we can just add a revise with today's dates in these plots.
Okay.
And then, if, if we could revise it, you know, the, so the five hundred dollars from now on, and anyone that does not pay, it will be resold at five hundred.
You're gonna provide a mass notice, right, so?
Yes.
I'll put that in the minutes, and we'll, we'll have that.
We're gonna try our best to reach out to every one of these individuals that has purchased these plots and let them know they have X amount of time to come forward and pay at the old price. And the plots will be released by any circulation.
At the new price, yeah.
Elements, you'd like to go another week to make phone calls, two weeks, so you try to contact, or run it in the face for a week, and that's it.
I would say run it two weeks.
Two weeks, yes, that's usually what we do when we advertise anything, it's two weeks circulation in the face.
And should we have a, a date, a, a date of, after this date it goes up to five hundred?
If it's the first.
August first.
August first, for the, for the new, for the new price?
Or two weeks.
For the new price, August first, okay. And every, all modifications for August first?
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, and it was second by Commissioner Solis, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas, make your paperwork, please.
Item number fourteen is to request proposals for the repairs of the Pajón Nutrition Center. Commissioners, I think that's, that told me that the roof is in need of repair, and there are some, maybe some mold issues now in the interior, that, so it will require substantial repairs.
Motion to approve this, so I propose.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza to request proposals, again by Commissioner Gasa, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number fifteen is to approve repairs to the landfill dump truck, which is signed, it's signed in my office. I think he's got, well, he had one working dump truck, and it, it needs substantial repairs, and-
Yes, sir.
And your budget is exhausted, Commissioners.
Do you have a price already on the repairs, Mr. Salinas?
No, you're talking about like two, three thousand dollars.
Two thousand dollars, motion to approve this.
Motion by Commissioner, Mendoza, second, by Commissioner Edisondo, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Mr. Salinas, can you start trying to fix the army truck so you can take it too?
No, no, I said no.
No?
But that, it's gonna take a lot of money.
I think, I think that's a good truck, though.
That's a good truck.
Well, Commissioner, then just fix it with the, with the rotor bridge.
As a matter of fact, we have the alternator, we have everything to get it fixed, I don't know.
I think that's a good idea, well, let's fix it, it wouldn't have any money, but-
Because he's not gonna be driving it outside each week.
Commissioner Mendoza, have it fixed and, and send it to the landfill, when it's in working condition for your son.
You, you buy more than you need.
He wants it in working condition, so, yeah, let's get it, thank you, Commissioner.
That was better than you expected, because you got it, it's an equipment.
Working condition. Item number sixteen is to approve the purchase of a John Deere seven fifty L crawler dozer from Doggett Heavy Machinery for Zapatas County Motor Brake Department. Well, Commissioner Mendoza, I know, it has been pricing equipment, and, and I guess, delivery of equipment is the important thing. As you know, we, we are going out for certificates of obligation to purchase some needed equipment for all our departments. Apparently, this dozer is available for, for pickup?
Yes, yes, Commissioner, they do have it on the lot right now in Victoria, ready for delivery. They were ready to do the green light today, they probably have it here tomorrow, the day after tomorrow. Basically, as a judge-
Basically, as the judge mentioned, uh, this would be covered, of course, by the certificate of obligation, there's also an item on the agenda to approve a resolution or reimbursement which would cover this, meaning we would pay upfront. Once we get the monies from the certificate of obligation, we will reimburse ourselves for that expense. Uh, this dozer, as the judge mentioned, the timing is what's, what we're looking at, because, uh, if they were to sell it and then we were to go back next week and say we want to order one just like that, it would take eight to ten months to get here. So, we're trying to take advantage of having it put on site right now.
Motion by Commissioner Rosso, seconded by Commissioner Solis, and, and, uh, the reason I, I requested, I mean, I asked about the CDs, uh, Mr. Solis, there is a CD for Road and Bridge that possibly we could, uh, you know, take out for now, and, uh, and it's, uh, we have a, a special, uh, Road and Bridge CD for three hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
What, what's the price on this?
It's three hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred and ninety-one thousand, three twenty-eight eighteen, it's there in the packet.
Okay.
Two ninety-eight, two ninety-one, three twenty-eight eighteen, after the buy board is on.
I ask the Commissioner, I think we, we have thirty days to, to pay?
Yes, we're on, we'll be on the net thirty, we've kind of negotiated a little bit longer than maybe net forty-five.
We're hopeful that the certificates of obligation will be in place within, by September first, so.
Yes.
We, we may, uh, be pretty close to, to when, we can negotiate a maybe a, a longer term payment on it.
Yeah.
But if not, I think we can cancel that CD, Mr. Solis, and, and then once the, the certi- certificates of obligation come into play, we can reimburse that CD for the road, because it is a, a road and bridge purchase.
Yes.
So, it can't come out of our general fund.
Yeah.
Uh, so, we, we can do that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and I believe, Judge, that we have an existing bulldozer right now which is getting repaired, once it's repaired, we can probably have it moved over to the landfill and it can be used.
I think, I think we can have use for it.
That one, Mr. Solis wants.
Yes.
How much you gonna pay it, bud?
All right, we got a motion, a second, and those, the money will come out of the, a CD from the Special Water and Bridge Fund, although in favor is the eye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item number seventeen is to approve the issuance of purchase orders for Doggett Freightliner, and this is, by the way, the, the previous item, a buy board item, uh, so we didn't have to, uh, uh, go out for, for proposals on it, so. Item number seventeen is to approve the issuance of purchase orders for Doggett Freightliner of South Texas LLC and Doggett Heavy Machinery, or Heavy Machinery for Zapata County Road and Bridge Department.
This is the same thing, Judge, Commissioners, and basically, we don't have to pay anything upfront, this is equipment that we will purchase from the certificate of obligation. What we're trying to do is basically just lock in the price, uh, because the price of CO is increasing.
Let me ask Commissioner, uh, this is for, for the John Deeres?
This is for the, for the backhoes?
But you're gonna be ordering one, two, three?
Well, that, that's what we would have to decide after, if this is approved, and then so we can, because we haven't ordered any equipment yet.
Okay.
So, as we discussed, these commissioners would be getting an ex amount for their budget, so we would have to decide, okay, how many backhoes, how many dump trucks, how many grapple trucks?
Oh, okay, it's gonna be doing for the whole.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a pack.
It's gonna be a pack.
I'll, I'll make a motion. What we're gonna do is just create a line item for all of us.
Yes, and it's basically just to lock in the price and throw it on it, because we had originally quoted this equipment two months ago, and when else about three grand.
And we did this last time also, where we.
So, we wouldn't have any financial repercussions if, worst case scenario, the CO wouldn't go through, we had to cancel the order, there wouldn't be any repercussions to that. So.
Yeah, let's, let's, uh, we're basically getting in line, get that.
Exactly, because we're looking at about, yes, we're looking at about worst case scenario on the grapple trucks, dump trucks, eight to twelve months before we get.
So, we got a motion, Commissioner?
Rosso.
Seconded by Commissioner Solis, any discussion, although in favor is the eye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And, and, Commissioner, y'all know your budget, uh, amount?
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand, so we all can figure out what, what exactly y'all wanna order. Item number eighteen is to approve partial payment of six thousand three hundred and twenty dollars to Riot Enterprises LLC for picnic area, pool area, and bleacher area shaped art at the Romano Tito's Park, art for met damaged by the recent storm, and only a partial amount was covered by Texas Zapata County's insurance policy.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner, uh, Solis, seconded by Commissioner Rosso, although in favor is the eye.
Uh.
Motion carries.
Just as information, Judge, this was, uh, that big storm we had.
Last year.
Yes, and, uh, basically, the insurance, we have fifteen thousand to cover, so the shortfall was six thousand three twenty to them.
We need to fix that, so that, this will be coming out of our general fund, uh, Commissioner, out of the maintenance and operation line item.
Or, or the building, yeah.
Yeah, building, yes. Item, uh, number nineteen is to consider the use of the exhibit hall on November twelfth through the thirteenth, uh, twelve and thirteen, or twenty twenty-one for a boxing event, Commissioner Edisondo.
Yes, Judge, I think I've heard, uh, the locals here from the flyers on the back of the chapters, that we sent these boxing events, that they're gonna be, they said they want to have full experience of all the, and, uh, talking to Commissioner Mendoza, uh, I need to talk to them again and ask them, because we don't want to move all the.
The pins, yeah, I was asking her this morning if it would require, I know that our county crews have a lot of trouble having to relocate all those pins and disassemble and reassemble.
But I think they would be able to use where they have the arena.
The open area.
Uh, and I know that this.
There's already bleachers there.
There's already. That, that'll work, uh, so we approve it and basically say that they can move this.
And this is in November, so we have some time to clean out anything that we have.
Do we charge for something like this?
I don't know if, if we're gonna charge anything, I know that they're gonna be charging at the door.
Yeah, so it's a.
It is a private.
It's a business that charges.
Yes, so, I mean, we.
Who's gonna be, we're charging.
I think definitely we would need to charge for the electricity and, and the cleanup of.
What, there's, there's a rental.
There's a rental.
Oh, then would you have a rental schedule for it?
Yeah.
The committee center, how much do we, we charge thirteen hundred, fifteen hundred?
Yeah, like thirteen hundred, but the, for that, there's, we had, we charged.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe it was fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
For that.
For the showbar.
Motion to approve, I mean, uh, agreement with the.
Well, and although.
Well, we, we have a fee schedule for it, so they just have to stay.
The fee schedule and the requirements, I, I know we need insurance, liability insurance.
Yeah, so motion to approve, sending the fifty dollar.
I'll send a motion. Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Rosso, although in favor is the eye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty is to accept the retirement of Almeida Gonzalez in fifteen dash zero one four, slot number four, effective six thirty twenty twenty-one.
How many years of service from this role, Thomas?
Uh. Maybe he had.
Ten?
Yeah, about ten years.
Motion to approve the retirement, is there anything?
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Rosso, although in favor is the eye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-one is to transfer Juan Eiro Rodriguez from ten dash zero zero four, slot number one, at ten dollars and ninety-eight cents an hour to, to fifteen dash zero one four, slot number four, uh, driver at twelve dollars and ten cents an hour, effective seven twelve twenty-one. Seconded by Commissioner Solis, although in favor is the eye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-two to transfer Oscar Flores ten dash zero zero two, slot one, at nine dollars an hour labor maintenance to ten dash zero zero four, slot one, truck driver slash welder at ten dollars and ninety-eight cents an hour, effective seven twelve twenty-one. Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Mendoza, although in favor is the eye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-three is to approve adding the Treasury's Office Open Gov Financial Software to the cloud at the same current rate of thirty thousand one seventy-seven on a six year, and beyond, it will drop to twenty-six thousand dollars a year, service will add security and stability to prevent ransomware, viruses, and cyber attacks.
That's inexpensive, though.
No, no, actually, I don't think, uh, that, um, it's expensive to get on the cloud, because it was a, a charge of ten thousand of negotiating with the, uh, uh, one of the executives from Open Gov, and I was explaining to him the financial situation that the county was going through. Uh, we wouldn't be, uh, incurring any expense today. Uh, the reason I rushed over with gross, getting the item in, I've had the emails, uh, they wanted to weigh the five year contract that we presently have, we're paying thirty, thirty-two thousand a year, and now, that meant adding another ten thousand. The reason to get on the cloud was because we're running my software out of our server.
Right.
And we're vulnerable, we're, uh, we're gonna be hit with ransomware.
When our server crashes, we have.
We'd lose our, our data. La Salle County, and that's talking to our consultant, uh, they're spending like sixty thousand annually, because they had hit with ransomware, uh, a year back, and that's only having a company come in from San Antonio to be checking, you know, to not have somebody.
So, currently, we're, we, we've already paying thir- uh, thirty thousand?
We're paying, uh, thirty, like, thirty.
Thirty-one seventy-seven, that's our annual fee.
That's our.
And you're gonna add ten thousand dollars to it.
Well, after negotiating with the judge, we'll.
No, no, they, they, they're not gonna charge us anything.
They just say it was ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars a year.
Do it.
Well, it's all these figures in front of me, I don't know, like, okay.
How we're paying it, yeah.
No, we're, what we're paying, uh, is the original contract.
Well, that's good news. That is a very good negotiation.
I'll send a motion.
He, you know, he should give you the history, we're, I was telling him, it's very difficult for me to go before the court and ask for additional ten thousand, it's, they normally charge like five percent of the, um, contract, other contracts, uh, uh, price of what our software was costing them. So, he said, you know what, um, just go to the court and, and I'm gonna give you a flat twenty-six thousand on year six and beyond. So, the five percent is, I figured, uh, what it would be today would be ten thousand one hundred and sixty-five.
So, we're saving that amount?
So, we're saving that amount for the next four years, uh, and then by him giving me a flat twenty-six thousand on year six and beyond, uh, he dropped it down to nine thousand.
Very good.
And, but he gave me on the cloud by the end of the, the week, uh, and the reason was so, uh, I'm very scared of, you know, all this ransomware.
Right, so.
It's, it's real?
You're advising the needs on it every day, so.
And that was my biggest concern of, uh, in speaking with him, that.
So, would, would our system automatically back up to the cloud every day, Mr. Solis?
Yes, no, they, they will definitely take care of all that for us, we have the, um, ability to, um, continue doing our work or making work. If we, when it's a web, um, web based, we can log in and continue doing processing payroll from home, uh, doing our work, so we would log in remotely. The other positive thing about getting on the cloud is, that's the way, uh, the only way to actually let all of the different departments, Commissioner, log in from wherever to look at your budgets, is, uh, Commissioner, it could be at your house, or, you know, at the chamber, you log in and you'll be able to see your department. And, uh, without just viewing access.
And see our budgets are, are up to date, uh, line item balances.
Right, you know, so like.
Cause, cause right now we have to be coming, getting a budget analysis or calling the auditor, how much money do I have left?
How much I have left, just so, uh, and also give us the ability, uh, for the sheriff at the jail, or he were, to log in and get his balance, call him on. Do you know how much money I have in the slide?
And hopefully, one day, we get to the, one group to submit POs digitally, you know, through the software, not have to do the paper copy that they walk into your.
Being on the cloud also will facilitate the departments, uh, generating the PO requests going automatically to the auditor. All he has to do is open up his, uh, computer, he'll look at your request, hit a button, approve it, it comes to my office for approval.
Okay.
I'm, I'm trying to track the, I'm trying to track some money that we were.
So, uh, that'll give us a lot of, you know, possibilities to make things here for the software. Doing all these things, that, you know, I purchased all these, uh, things through the software, but then I was on the cloud, right, so now instead of doing, uh, we're getting.
We seconded, right, so, Commissioner Rosso, Commissioner Solis, second, uh, the motion.
Yes.
And although in favor is the eye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Solis, and thank you for taking care of the county. Sheriff, I see you, yeah, I know you, I saw that you were, you guys said the sheriff has a resolution, you wanna go through it right now, or are you busy, or you wanna sit through the whole meeting?
No, um, it's fine, you're okay to go on.
Okay, all right, all right. Uh, item number twenty-four is, uh, to begin, uh, bid request on repair services for the water department tanks and towers, Ralph, good morning, Mr. Solis.
Good morning, Ralph. Really good, sir?
Uh, Ralph, uh, I guess within a few weeks, he visited my office saying, uh, there's a need, I think we've got four towers and, or stand pipe altogether, and of course, they, they need some service, uh, I told Ralph, I think we need to go out and bid on this, and, and the reason I, we should start the process is, uh, the American Rescue Plan, uh, which we got, uh, I think we received two point seven five million dollars, half of it, we got it, I guess, last month, uh, and, uh, we use that to cover our deficit, uh, from our remedy deficit from the previous year because of the pandemic. The second half of it, I, I think there's very limited scope of what you can use those monies for, basically, water, sewer, and broadband. And Ralph told me, he mentioned the need, uh, these, uh, these tanks, that they need the substantial repair, I mean, they're not gonna fail, but, but they do need, uh, repairs.
Well, we have the funding opportunity, but it's for the advantage of it.
So, I think we start the process, uh, and then go out for bids, see what, what they, how they come in, and then we'll see. I, I did ask about the, the funding for that second half of, of the American Rescue Plan, uh, it will be, uh, three hundred and sixty-five days after the first, uh, monies that we received, not before, so, any, any, uh, project that we will have to be self-funded and then be reimbursed.
Reimbursed.
Uh, at a later date, so that's, uh, how it's gonna work. I think it will require administration, uh, because of these federal funds, so I, I guess we can begin with, with the process of, of requesting bids, and then, uh, next meeting, we'll request for administration.
Getting, uh, for administrative services.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to go that route while with, with the funding, but, uh, let's get started on that.
Mr. Solis, are you doing a little something sunny?
We're doing all right, uh, I know we have a spare right now for, are we talking about for the decision?
Yes.
We have, uh, actually two spares, one for, um, decision one, two, and three.
Cause I know they haven't called me, that they're really having problems on the phone with you guys.
Yeah, we have a meeting about that.
Well, don't jinx it.
Item number twenty-five, Commissioner Rosso, to, uh, request proposals for the repair services, seconded by Commissioner Solis, any discussion, although in favor is the eye.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay, and, uh, I guess next meeting, we'll start with administration. Item number twenty-five is to approve the Texas Association of Counties ACBP plan for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, understand your meaning?
Do you need a year now?
Everything going up.
Um, so we got the review rate for our, for our country building currencies, uh, we had, we did see a seventy percent increase in our rate with our current plan. Uh, right now, we have the fourteen hundred NGS, which has a two thousand dollar deductible, four thousand out of pocket max, um.
Is that the pen in the red?
That is, the one we had.
The green one.
The green one, sorry.
Is the green, uh, the green section.
That's a ninety percent, very.
We, we do cover, so is that ninety percent, they will be seeing a slight increase, uh, in the, in the biweekly, uh, rate, which would be the thirty-one dollars and nine cents. Um, after reviewing, I did meet with Yonissa Martinez, our, our representative from the cost, she did present other plans, and basically, I did review amongst I even have to tell you enough, um, and what we are kind of recommending and hoping gets approved is on the second page, which is, uh, thirteen hundred NGS plan, um, with lower deductible, five hundred dollars, and the out of pocket, five hundred dollars. Um, we don't want to have our, our employees, uh, see an increase in their rate, um, so we're recommending ninety-five percent in total contribution with that plan. Um, the annual contribution on the county's end would be about two million dollars, uh, for the year.
So, that would be how much of an increase compared to what we're paying?
A hundred and, what was yours, a little, a little bit less than two hundred thousand?
Yeah.
So, we have, we have two hundred and sixty employees that are currently enrolled in our insurance plan, uh, those two sixty, how many have made the deductible?
Uh, we're seeing about seven.
Only seven?
Seven of them.
And you recommended the one on the bottom, ninety-five percent, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Commissioner Rosso to recommend thirteen hundred NGS, that one?
Yeah.
So, I guess the idea of this is to not, uh, impact our employees' pocket out of pocket.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that would be a, a ninety-five, uh, contribution from the county, which would, uh, just reduce the amount of biweekly, uh, contribution from employee to sixteen dollars and sixteen cents, thirty-one dollars currently, so it'd be thirty dollar a month savings.
A second motion, Judge.
Motion by, a seconded by Commissioner Mendoza, so, the, the idea of a lower deductible, if, if only seven.
Yeah, that, that's, that's all the concern to me, that, that, that's the need really. Yeah, that that's what the concern to me does, is 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 it really there to lower the deductible if it's not really being reached? I mean, out of two hundred and sixty employees, seven are meeting it, so, you know, is it worth, uh, increasing our contribution? So apart from that green plan, um, Stirling, what other option do we have?
You can just, um, in the same nuts, with this thousand dollar deductible, just increase our.
So it'd be about a hundred thousand dollar less?
If we do that?
Current plan with ninety-five percent.
And just increase our contribution to ninety-five, to ninety-five five?
Do we keep our current plan?
Commissioner, will you modify your motion to do that?
Okay, which one do you want, Commissioner, I mean.
It's not worth this.
It's a hundred thousand dollars less from the county, if we keep our current plan and we increase the the contribution a ninety-five percent, so the employee will be paying fifteen dollars less per month.
I'm not, I'm not, my motion.
It's not worth lowering the deductible if only.
And the county will save about hundreds.
So I'll second the modified motion, Regent.
Motion to keep our current plan with a ninety-five percent county contribution.
Yes.
And that's the motion by Commissioner Garsa, second by Commissioner Mendoza, Mendoza in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I I think that was the original goal is, uh, because of inflation costs, I I wanted to make sure the employee are not paying more. That will definitely.
That'll definitely balance it out.
Yeah.
Uh, it's ninety percent, not like.
Ninety-five percent.
No, it's gonna be increased, ninety-five percent, five percent more.
It'll be the red one, Ramon.
The red one, oh, the one on the bottom.
It'll be a ninety-five percent contribution from the county, so the employee.
Fourteen hundred NGS.
And it's it's the same one, except that the county is, uh, paying.
We're paying over one, we're we're paying five percent.
So it's the green one?
Yes.
Yeah.
I understood the green one.
Well, well.
That's what we have.
So it's the same plan, except we're, the county gonna increase our per our percentage from ninety to ninety-five.
Five percent.
Yeah.
And we'll save a hundred grand from.
And we'll save a hundred grand, uh, from.
Well, it's, uh, on the situation.
Yeah, okay. Item number, uh, twenty-six is to approve the Texas County and District Retirement System renewal for twenty twenty-two.
Judge Commissioners, on this one, um, we did see, uh, the increase, the percentage increase about three point seven two percent, uh, from last year. Um, with the new renewal rate is at thirteen point eighteen.
Motion to approve this.
Second, motion, uh, by by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Solis, and, uh, the same benefit package is, uh, seven percent for employee deposit rate, employer matching to twenty-five. Alright, so we're keeping the same, okay, we got a motion in second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number twenty-seven, to approve the renewal range for America's Dental Vision for year twenty twenty-two with no rate increase.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Solis, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried.
You think of no rate increases?
Yeah.
We'll have to get back into that.
Twenty-eight is to approve the Zapata County holiday schedule for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, I think.
Uh, did provide a copy in your package, Commissioner, until last page, um, I had talked about, I don't know.
And then you can change the.
Uh, yeah, so did I, uh, let me, uh, I did, uh, holiday, if it didn't, uh, pass this year, it would be absurd on my name to twenty, so I would, it was the twenty, twenty five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Garsa, to approve the holiday schedule presented, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried.
We will be having, uh, willing the county chair this year, please.
I hope so.
Item number twenty-nine is to approve the use of Zapata County provision to a long-term head start, an early head start before you take care, fair, pending days.
Yes, yes, Judge, um, I guess I may call you, call you, I know, I respect you having a review, but I did last year, they didn't.
Yeah, yeah, do it with Laura.
Motion move.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Garsa, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Commissioner, we got some line item transfers.
Motion to approve this.
Second.
Item, uh, motion by Commissioner Mendoza, on item number thirty-three, uh, there was a typo, uh, it should be ten, six fifty, four sixty-two repairs, five hundred dollars, uh, to ten, six fifty, three ten, supplies, five hundred. So that that would be the change, not the amount, just, uh.
Okay.
So motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Garsa with with those corrections, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. We've got resolutions and proclamations, item number thirty-five is a resolution preparing the intention to reimburse certain expenditures and.
Motion to approve this.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Garsa.
This resolution is part of the certificate of obligation.
Yes.
Yes, that's what we were discussing about reimbursing any, uh, purchases of equipment upfront and then reimbursing after the certificate of obligation, as commented.
Very well, so motion is second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item number thirty-six is a resolution recognizing the Zapata County Sheriff's Office livestock and cattle theft prevention program.
Want to move.
Thank you for waiting, Sheriff.
You can go ahead and read it, Judge.
Yes. Motion by Commissioner Garsa, second by Commissioner Solis, and this is resolution recognizing the Zapata County Sheriff's Office livestock and cattle theft prevention program, whereas the Zapata County Sheriff's Office created and initiated a local crime prevention program in the early twenty twenty-one to assist in the identification of ranch and property owners in Zapata County. And whereas Zapata County Sheriff, Ray Ray Mundo de Bosque, authorized the purchase of special pla- pla- placards that could be numbered and tracked throughout through a central database to quickly identify local farm and ranch owners in order to protect their livestock and equipment, and whereas this pioneering program is a first of its kind, both in its funding and unique method of identifying farm and ranch owners to facilitate prompt action by law law enforcement for the preservation of life and property. Whereas the program now has over three hundred registered participants in Zapata County alone and is now being emulated by other counties and be and been recognized for its creative approach in Texas Law Magazine and now and now therefore be resolved, the Zapata County Commissioners Court congratulates Zapata County Sheriff's Office for creation of this innovative program and hereby endorses its continued success. It's, uh, I congratulate the sheriff for bringing this up. I think it's very important for ranchers to be able to to call law enforcement, uh, for any means or 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 EMS, uh, emergency services, and have the database say, okay, this is the ranch, this is where I gotta go. So it's it's very important, Sheriff, and I commend you for, uh, for bringing this, uh, to reality.
Thank you, and, uh, like I said, we're gonna keep, uh, meeting with Mrs. Susan, uh, Kimmy and, uh, trying to do this also to the surrounding counties, anybody wants to be involved.
I think, Sheriff, I think some of the ranchers, uh, I think to register, uh, themselves with your office, how would be the the best possible?
They can call our office for, uh, Mr. Rodriguez, uh, his, uh, at the extension agent office.
Okay.
They can register there, he has placards as well.
Yes, it's a partnership, and I'm glad you brought it up with Agrolife, uh, Texas A and M Agrolife, uh, it's so, uh, it's a, it's a good collaboration, uh, that, uh, that we're seeing.
And it 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 doesn't have to be a big ranch, just, it can be an acre, two acres, just as long as we know where you have your equipment and, uh, your house or anything that you have aside from your household.
And the placards, any cost to the rancher?
No, the Zapata County SO is here, it's the cost.
Okay, very well, and they're very nice placards, yeah. So, and and you can get them for each individual pasture?
If you have three or four entrances, yes, and any different pasture as well, with a different GPS location.
And how how would you recommend a rancher get that GPS location?
Uh, it.
Most of us, many of us don't, uh.
We can go along with them and we'll, uh, work along with Game Garden and the cattle, uh, company, the Texas Ranchers, and we'll we'll exactly put the placard right in your gate and give you the GPS as well, so you can have.
The corner.
We actually have, there's a few, there's a few apps, there's a few apps on the phone also, we're having to do it now because when we request streetlights, uh, so you will make that entry, they're now, they don't want, uh, they want a GPS coordinate or that's streetlight.
So you need to get an app on your phone.
Yeah, I know.
I need to educate myself.
Hand in hand with our nine one one system as well.
But so the nine one system will.
Will also be included in that as well.
So we'll be okay.
Very well, I think very good.
Thank you.
Sheriff, now, here, before we, I know that I've had several calls from those, uh, little ranches or subdivisions from all the areas, the cattle ranch and all these, that there's been a lot of shooting.
Yes.
And, uh, I know that we already pressed ordinance where there's some supposed to be a shooting in ten acres or less. They tell me that some of the deputies have gone over and said that there's something, uh, and I know that that they wanted to see the ordinance.
Is that an ordinance, Commissioner?
What what is?
Uh, we, uh, it's the government has the Texas handbook, so.
Yes, it's there.
Yes, the the thing is, when when it when it applies to the deadly conduct, it means firing towards another household or or somebody was threatened in in that in that aspect. Now, if they're shooting towards the the river or or into the brush, then we have to see and investigate if there was a minute danger of anybody else within the area. Um, like us, when we qualify here, I know we get a lot of calls, if not, to nine one one, there there's a lot of shooting, but it's at the range. So we we have to differentiate that because we can arrest somebody that that wasn't causing any any disturbance or harm, and it can it can affect them anyway. But we are, we are talking to the ranchers and we are talking to people to let them know that they're in violation and somebody is offended or does.
Ten acres or less?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that that's, uh.
And then the sound does carry, you know, a distance, a lot of time, you think it's, you know, nearby, a lot of times.
So so when it comes to ten acres or less, is it like?
They can't fire.
No, not at all.
They can discharge fire.
Not, not. Not with a P B gun.
It'll be, uh, it can be deadly conduct or discharging a fire. Uh, if you would like for those people to come by the office, that way we can also go out into the area.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff.
Judge, I make a motion, then we go to the executive session.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, turn to the executive session, second by Commissioner Garsa. The item to be heard is item, uh, number thirty, to address Zapata County employee violations of of several employee handbook guidelines in any and all matters subject thereto, uh, we are now in effect, and this will be heard pursuant to Texas Department of Commerce, question five five one point zero seven one, of the patient with a dream, and five five one point zero seven four personnel marriage. I'll tell you a motion. We are now in. We are now in.
Okay, this is quick.
We got two others.
Okay, two others, hour and a half.
Hold on, bear with me, let me find the other button. Are we back on?
Yes.
I'm gonna come with you to go back to regular session.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Solis. For the record, no action was taken in executive session. Item number thirty, commissioners, is to address about the kind of employee violations of several employee handbook guidelines and any and all matters subject to.
Motion to table, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza to table, seconded by Commissioner Solis. Any discussion, although in privacy, I, motion, favor.